Morning, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, let me just announce the untimely death of one of our team members, one of our own. Passing of Malcolm Ivy this past evening about seven o'clock. A part-time employee, worked in risk management here in City Hall. And let me ask you if you would, remember his family, his wife and family, and to pray for them for comfort during this most difficult time. Malcolm was a great employee, enjoyed working with him. We'll call the meeting, the December third meeting, two thousand thirteen, Jackson City Council order. And before we stand for the invocation and pledge, let me recognize Councilman Buchanan for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to everyone. I would like to introduce and welcome to the city of Jackson, the new pastor of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, the Reverend Reginald Boyce. He's been with us about three months now. We welcome him back to the city. He's a Lane College graduate. And Brother Brooks, he's an Alpha man. Pastor Boyce comes to us from Gethsemane Baptist Church, where he was pastor in Memphis, Tennessee. Not only is he the pastor, the new pastor of our church, but he now serves as the Director General for the Tennessee Baptist Missionary and Education Convention. He's in that. He and his wife, Crystal, have three young daughters, and the last one is about six weeks old. Pastor Boyce.
Please rise.
At this time, we seek you, understanding you're the God of all, you know all, you're in control of all. But we thank you for this opportunity, for us to come to you, for us to meet and gather together to discuss the plans for the city. Today, God, I thank you for our mayor. Ask that you touch him in a special way, that you give him the guidance and direction to lead this city. Thank you for the councilmen and councilwoman. We ask that you continue to lead them and lead them in a support system to our mayor. God, we ask that you touch the city at this time, where the crime is going on, God, we ask that you decrease it. Whatever plans we have for the city, God, we ask for your grace and your mercy, that we may allow these plans to go into fruition. And then, God, we ask that you touch the Ivy family. In this loss, we ask that you comfort them, that you strengthen them, whether we build them up or they're torn down. Now, God, show grace on this meeting, allow there to be understanding, allow there to be no confusion, and allow us, God, to be one Jackson and move together. We thank you, we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think you can show all council members present. And item four on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the November fifth, two thousand thirteen, city council meeting. Council members received a copy of those minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll let those minutes stand as submitted. Item five is the invitation to public comment. I'll let you all know in the audience that if any of you have any comment under any item, under new business, if you'll please let the chair know that, we'll make sure you have an opportunity to speak. We have no proclamations this morning. Item seven is first readings. Consideration of ordinance to rezon property located on the north side of Christmasville Cove, adjacent to Park Place West, commercial development from RS One, single-family residential, District Two, SC One, planned unit commercial development district containing 1.15 acres, more or less submitted by Gary Taylor. Stan, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. As you can see on the location map, this is an area that is adjacent to existing SC One commercial zone property. This lot has a zone line that currently passes through the lot, and so part of the lot was zoned and part of it wasn't. So this just cleans it up so that the lot is consolidated under one zoning class, and the planning commissioner has recommended approval to you.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, this is an ordinance on first reading, so we'll have a public hearing. Ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Item two is consideration of ordinance to amend Title III, Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Court Administration. Anyone here to discuss that issue with council? Why don't we, if council has no objection, let's just move on to the next item, and we'll hold that one. I think we need to hear a little commentary on that particular one, and we also have one other, which I think we'll need some commentary on. That would be items two and three under first readings. We have, we'll go to item eight, second readings, we have none, and under new business. We do have item one, is consideration of resolution of the governing body of the West Tennessee Healthcare Sportsplex, City of Jackson, Tennessee, authorizing the assurance and payment of a six-year, $500,000 capital outlay note for the following public works projects, FY fourteen capital projects, FY fifteen capital projects, and FY sixteen capital projects. Al, I'll let you explain to the council what we're doing there.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I apologize for not being at the pre-agenda meeting the other night and explaining this a little bit sooner. But what we have is a resolution that would allow us to borrow an additional $500,000, and that's how the state looks at it, as new money. But really, it's $500,000 that we prepaid previously. And sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words. Let me just show you, some of these you may already have copies of. But we had three capital outlay notes with Bancor South. And 0N was Series Six was $1,995,000, Series Six A, $1,995,000, and Six B was $1,995,000, twelve-year capital outlay notes. And we went in and paid, and we had a large amount of contribution from the hospital in the early years. We went ahead, I was the one that did it, thought it was very wise to do at the time, don't think so now. But we paid $498,750 on the back end, it would be like you paying on the back end of your mortgage. And now those payments are not there, but we're needing the money back, if you want to say that, for operations of the capital outlay plan going forward. And we are proposing a loan, from the bank's standpoint, they're just going to reopen the 2006 Series B. From our standpoint, we have to have the council approve because it is basically new money. And you can see we are stretching it out into a six-year payment, but it's actually eight years because for the first two years, we won't be making any payments. Obviously, you will ask, why do we need to do this? Well, the sportsplex, I'm gonna get my papers straight here, stands on its own and operates as such. And even in a year like last year, when we lost 240,000 of revenue on three major tournament cancellations, where we had over 100 teams signed up, even in a year like that, on an operating profit basis, we made $229,466. And I know this is a little bit hard to understand, but I think Randy, being a financial guy, can understand that you can make money and there still be sharp cash flow if you're trying to add things to your business, capitalized. I saw the look on Randy's face here. But after we made that 229,000, paid off all of our indebtedness that was due that year, and the depreciation is backed out, et cetera, we end up with a whopping $4,743 positive cash flow. Well, obviously, we can't do much putting that forward in a reserve for the next year's capital needs. So what we, the mayor and I, have gotten together, and the one thing that, in a normal business, you turn a profit and you try and pull in your receivables, you try and get people to pay sooner than expected, and you try and push out what you owe other people. Well, unfortunately, in our case, the other people is the general fund. They are our banker, basically. And we're trying to get away from the point where there's any detriment to the general fund, because the general fund, even though we're in a great position right now with about 20 million undesignated, is gonna go like zap with three and a half million dollars that we're gonna owe on the liquor mixed drink tax that was omitted all over the state. And we've got several other things that we're gonna be coming to you on for additional police. And Stan has a civic plan that's gonna require monies. So we wanna make sure that the sportsplex is not hinging, infringing on the general fund to any degree. And let me just, I'm kinda wandering around here. But to give you an idea of how important the sportsplex is, and I see we've got Lori Nunnery sitting in the back, and she could probably get up here and vouch for what I'm saying. But you can see that we started out with like 846 teams, 1,100, 1,200, 1,600, 1,600, 1,700, 2,000. We have had over a million people in the six or seven years of operation go through the turnstiles at the sportsplex. There are no literal turnstiles, but counting tickets and team counts, et cetera. We know that there has been a million people. Not all of those have been from out of town. But to give you an example of how important the sportsplex is to the community, we already have signed up 30 to 40 people that are coming from Lockport, New York, to the Sarah Beth Tournament, the softball tournament. And you have to ask yourself, when in the world is 30 or 40 people out of Lockport, New York, gonna say, hey, let's come to Jackson, Tennessee, and spend three or four days of hotels and restaurants and et cetera? So when I gave you the results of what the sportsplex has earned, and what we've done cash flow, I'm sure Lori would support me, that it's nowhere near what it has brought to the community. It's, in my estimation, the most successful tourism aspect that we have to offer. And unfortunately, we can't just sit back and, on our laurels, and say we're successful. As a grandparent, I can attest to the fact that I no longer like to sit on hard bleachers out in the sun. And you can see what our competition is doing. This is South Haven. They've put nice covers over all of the bleachers for elderly people like myself, they can't stay out in the sun too long. We even have competition, believe it or not, that is putting stadium seating in place of bleachers. And we just have to face the fact that as a business, we're either gonna stay stagnant and say, you sit on the hard bleachers, you bring your own umbrellas, or we're going to work towards satisfying our customers and bring in more input, more revenue, et cetera. Now, what we've done, 'cause the mayor has made it clear to Ricky and myself that he does not want the general fund infringed on in any way, we have put together a capital plan spanning several years, and we've had to put some items on hold, this first item, the irrigation in the common areas. And that's not irrigation for the fields, but that's the irrigation for the aesthetic look of the complex itself, the banks coming down off of ridge crests, and that where you tend to have erosion, and you can end up with just pure mud and not a very good-looking place to make people wanna come to. We started out with a budget of 120,000. The quotes came in at 157 to 160, so the mayor has put that project on hold. We may reinstate that, or maybe we may reduce the size of the project. You can see that each year, we're almost forced to replace about $50,000 worth of equipment, groundskeeping equipment on the seventeen fields. And we need to keep in mind that the sportsplex is not only for travel ball, but if you actually looked at the hours of play, and you realize that we host the Dixie Youth on Thursdays, and we host the men's softball on a goodly number of summer and fall days, it's about 50/50 as to whether it should have been in the Parks and Rec Department. And Tony's sitting over here. We're gonna be upping our charge to Tony a little bit. He may not like that. But it is used as a park almost as much as it is as a travel ball complex. But we're being very conservative, and we're starting to look at things where our customers are asking for relief. And in FY sixteen, we would be adding a concession slash west restroom facility to Complex C, which is where the older, I'm sorry, Complex B, the older children, boys and girls play. And then, starting in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we would be looking at doing something on the shading aspect. It would be a long time before we get to stadium seating.
Would it be possible for us to get a copy of that capital plan?
Yes, yes, I'm telling you, to pass out copies. We redid this capital plan after the mayor went through and said, yes, no, maybe, et cetera. That's why it's a little bit delayed. But what I'm coming to you for now is to ask for those monies back, so to speak, so that we in no way, shape, or form will be dependent upon the general fund. Because as you see, in the current situation, we had to go back, if you remember, we had to go to the general fund and formalize, because the state no longer allows funds to just borrow from the general fund, unless you're just doing it month to month. Obviously, during the months of October, November, December, nobody's playing ball, so we're not getting revenues in. And of course, we can use out of the general fund. But when it comes down to the end of the year, the state has become much tougher on the balances carried over. So we do have a $250,000 note. We will be paying 50,000 to the general fund this year. In fact, we're gonna try and pay both, uh, two years and lump it together. But we're truly trying to get away from the general fund as a banker for the sportsplex in any respect. Have I stated that properly, Mayor?
Al, we're talking about a three-year capital projects plan at the sportsplex.
Right.
We'd paid half million dollars upfront prior to it becoming due. So we're asking for that back for capital projects over a three-year period. Out of that half million dollars, one payment at least of 50-something thousand would be made back to the general fund, and perhaps, perhaps two.
Over the three-year period, we're gonna pay back the whole 250,000.
Right.
Because we actually have a formal note to the general fund.
But this year, if the request is approved, then the first payment of 50-some-odd thousand ought to be made back to the general fund.
Yes, and more if possible.
Do you have the numbers for the profit with depreciation with you?
Yes.
Was that the $4,000 figure?
That $4,000, when they actually do cash flow, they back out depreciation because it's not an out-of-pocket cost.
Okay, all right.
But if you look at the four-year results of the sportsplex, if I can zero in, I just showed you the details of FY 13, which was a bad year because we lost $240,000 on those three rainouts of revenue. That's not 240,000 a clear profit, but we lost 240,000 in revenue. But you can see the, ever since FY 10, we have become profitable at the operating income level. But the cash flow, as you can see, has been generated, and that's after you pay off your capital and your mortgage, which runs $600,000 to $700,000, or debt service, I should say, per year. We end up with very little cash flow, and to do the things that we would like to do on the five-year plan, and we'd like to pull some of those forward, the mayor and I have discussed, if we get off to a good start in the spring, don't have any rainouts, and this 229,000 looks like it's gonna be bumped back up to 300, 400,000, then he might release some of the funds to do some of the capital items ahead of schedule. So to make a long story short, it's money that, and we've had three banks approach us, people do wanna loan the sportsplex money, because they have very much of confidence in the success of the sportsplex and the ability to pay back. This, what has been offered us by Bancor South, and we have two gentlemen here from Bancor South, if you'd like to ask any questions, but Doug and Scott are here, and we really appreciate the opportunity that they have offered us to reinstate what we've already prepaid and not be penalized. The terms of these three capital outlay notes were basically two-thirds of prime with a ceiling of 5%, 5.39, and a floor of 2.75. Well, prime has been at 3% roughly since the 2008 collapse of the markets. And I, I'm not any expert by any means, but I don't see any change in prime for four or five years, from what the Fed chairman is saying. So we're probably looking at a rate of 2.75 because that's the floor. And that is not much to pay at all for the flexibility that it will give us to become totally independent of the general fund.
Okay, any questions from council? We also have Mr. Yates here, from the director of sports. Go ahead, Councilman Wallace.
Would it hurt anything if we waited a month before we approved this? I mean, we have not seen the no-payment schedule or the capital expenditure worksheet that you showed us to get a chance to review it. Is it gonna be a problem for us to be able to get some of that information so we can review it before we approve this?
Well, I was gonna hand it to you right after the meeting.
Well, after we've approved it. I like to look at it before I approve it.
All I can say is, in my opinion, we would be just procrastinating because I think I have, my intentions were to get up here and give you all the information that you, as the board of directors of a company, because this is a company, would need to know. So I don't see what another month is going to buy us, but if that's what the council decides, because the mayor is gonna control these monies as to whether or not we spend them or we hold back. But the whole purpose is not to be an infringement on the general fund because of all the things that are coming up on the general fund. We wanna just take that out of the equation. The sportsplex can, and has proven, it can operate on its own. We paid $500,000 ahead of time. Had we not done that, in retrospect, we wouldn't have had to rely on the general fund, is I think. So I don't know how to make it any simpler, and quite frankly, in my opinion, we don't need to procrastinate.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Wilson, good morning. In summary, you're saying that we need to approve this, to not tie in with our general fund anymore than to have a lower note.
We would, in fact, we wanna get the $250,000 note that we have to the general fund, we wanna get that paid off quicker than the note calls for.
Okay.
Because of all the demands that are gonna be made on the general fund.
May I ask another question with respect to West Tennessee Healthcare's contribution each year? What was that, last year, you know? The Sports Authority, West Tennessee, you know, that we set up?
Their sponsorship and naming rights is the number he's looking for, how much they're paying each year for the naming rights for the sportsplex.
The naming rights, the hospital, West Tennessee Healthcare, is paying 150,000 a year. And that program, that ten-year program runs out in FY 16. And the donation that we receive is this, it's really like a payment in lieu of tax, which can be as low as 200,000 and as high as a million, has been running at 200,000 for four to five years. The county gets the same amount, and they pay it on capital. The council, I can't remember what year it was, Mayor, but actually voted to use that money for tourism only.
Tourism for the sportsplex.
Well, at the time, it was just tourism.
Yeah, but we came back to do.
And made it tourism for the.
Give more to for the sportsplex.
Yes, because there was nobody suggesting any tourism. The only thing that I can remember since I was here is that Mayor Farmer, in my initial year, had proposed something, some type of a zoological park or something, which never came to fruition.
So, Mr. Chairman and to Alice, is your recommendation that we approve the resolution?
It is my recommendation as the financial liaison for the sportsplex, because it will give us the flexibility we need so that we're not relying on the general fund at all.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Oh, okay, we have, we have, we have a motion. Let's accept the motion and.
I'll second that.
Just second it for continued discussion. Councilman Siska.
You know, ever since the sportsplex began and we started having tournaments there, I've been involved personally myself. I have eight grandchildren, and they all play baseball, softball. So my wife and I spend quite a bit of time at the sportsplex. If you haven't been there to see the operation, how it works, the concessions, the, everything that Rick has designed there has been successful. The fields are super, they're worked on daily, as soon as the game is over, it's taken care of, and the fans enjoy this. One of the things I heard when we first were talking about the sportsplex was when gasoline goes up, they'll go down. Well, I'm here to tell you, if gas goes $6 to $8, those folks still gonna come, 'cause they're gonna bring them children there, 'cause they wanna play ball. And this is a successful venue, and there's no reason that it won't continue, and I wanna thank Rick and his staff for the outstanding job they've done out there.
I have a question for me.
Go ahead, Councilman Brooke.
Initially, Al, I thought you were gonna ask us to write a blank check, in a large sense, with us not knowing what FY 14 capital projects or the FY 15 or 16 capital projects were. But you're. But you're telling us that you have a list of those projects there.
Right, and I'm going to, Ricky just revised it because, quite frankly, it was a higher list, and the mayor cut it back.
Okay.
So I'm gonna give you everybody a copy of the whole package that I presented, including, uh, you know, pictures of the, uh.
And, and, and I'm surely not here to, to debate, um, the propriety of the Sportsplex. I think we all know that it, it's beneficial to the city. Uh, I kinda don't think that's the issue. Uh, if I may, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this vote in order to be able to.
Okay, we have a motion and a second already. Uh, we'll need to dispose of that motion. Uh, you can call for a vote on the initial motion and go back to, or we can ask for revision. A revision of the initial motion.
Call for a vote on initial motion?
I second you.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing the, uh, the loan from Bancor. Is there any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
And that motion passes with, um, six members in favor, two voting no, and one abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead.
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask Tony a question. Tony, when was the last time we did any upgrades on the park on East Chester Centennial? Okay. Mayor, if we could, I'd like to, next couple of years or so, or the next year or so, take a look and make sure, because we don't, I support the Sportsplex and all of it, but I think we need to make sure our local parks, that our local people are using every day, uh, it's been looking nice and kept up to, or we don't wanna wait two or three, four years later and it's looking bad, make the whole community, you know, look terrible, you know, when these parks started going down. So if we could kinda take a look at it, make sure we keep the improvements up, but do some upgrades in our local parks also.
Well-intended, Councilman. I think we have some upgrades planned for Forest Hills Park on this next issue, but that's well, well-intended. Thank you for that.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, we can, uh, thank you, Hal. We can go back to, I think, um, before we proceed on other new businesses, go back to our ordinances under first reading. Uh, I think we have, it's the attorney here, and Captain Corley is here. To item two, under, um. Major, Major Corley, I'm, I was right. Sorry about that. Forgot about that promotion. Well-intended also. Item two is consideration of ordinance to amend Title III Municipal Court, Chapter Two, Court Administration. Scott?
Mayor, thank you, Mr. Council. Uh, what this, what this amendment does is allow us in the court, I said we have two today, to, uh, bring someone back to court when they fail to satisfy, uh, their fines and costs. This is something, uh, the mayor set up a conference for us with the city court in Memphis, and this was one of the suggestions they had that as a way to, uh, reduce the uncollected fines and costs is by having them come, to be started back in the court and for us to have the ability to execute or collect judgment from city court, just like to do General Sessions Court or the other courts. And so it's a, it's one more tool to allow us, uh, to be able to collect from people who pay. Obviously, we have a lot of fines from people who don't have any money. Part of the problem they have is they're, maybe sometimes their best, uh, option for the night is the city jail or the county jail. But this would give us the ability to do, do better on our collections.
Okay, any, any questions from council as to this ordinance?
Move the approval.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Uh, this is an ordinance on first reading, so we'll conduct a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to be heard on, on this matter in support of or in opposition to. Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Right here, Scott. There you go. Now I just need to slap some.
Okay, item three is consideration of the ordinance to amend Title Eight, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Two, with beer.
Again, uh, lawyers call what was done in other cases precedent, uh, and that really means most good ideas are barred or stolen. Uh, the police department, uh, has identified a problem that has arisen recently, and that is some of the violence that occurs late hours, early morning hours. We, uh, we looked at the problem and searched for solutions. We looked at Chattanooga, we looked at Knoxville, we looked at some of our other sister cities, and we've taken, uh, and borrowed what they've done and what the courts have reviewed and drafted this ordinance as a suggestion of how to deal with some of the violence, late-night hours, associated with guns, alcohol between twelve and six AM. This ordinance would say that for commercial enterprises, uh, that don't have a liquor license, don't have a beer license, that is serving alcohol or by allowing people to bring their own between six, uh, twelve PM and six AM, that's prohibited. It does not prohibit somebody, uh, at a social gathering at your home. Uh, it's got some exceptions on the second page, uh, someone who is at a hotel in their own room, uh, can stay up and, uh, drink in privacy, but it's, it's a tool, it's focused on what has been, uh, several murders and violent, uh, events in this city in recent past.
One quick question, maybe for Major Corley, uh, what's the process of enforcement for these events? Um, when we, we find out if it's a commercial event, they're renting a building out, or how do we go about enforcing?
I'd be glad for his input. But basically, it's like when you see any other illegal activity.
Okay.
I like that too. You can parade, but you have to have the proper permit notice and, and proper procedures in place, proper planning.
Yes, uh, it, the, the remedy here would be a citation, uh, it's a fifty-dollar fine, civil fine. Um, but each time that this occurs at the same business is a separate offense. So, but that would be the, the, the action of the police department would be, uh, if, if we called just such a location or determine that's what's going on, we would cite the, the manager, the business owner, whoever's present and responsible.
Uh, Major, is there any, is there any mechanism that we have to indicate where these parties are going to take place in commercial buildings? Is something that we pick up on Facebook and social media and?
A lot of it is, Mayor. Do we get on social media, we go receive some type of intelligence from, from the community that, that something like this is gonna happen?
Most of these are advertised, and so, uh, it's just simply a matter of keeping ears and eyes open. Secondly, on about your enforcement, the maximum constitutionally that we can do is a fifty-dollar fine, but since we have environmental court and since it has injunctive powers, if we saw one who would simply say, we're gonna pay fifty dollars, that's cost of doing business. We have other tools too.
In, in the process of issuing that citation, Major, would, would, at that time, would, would protocol be to, to simply shut the door and lock it down and get everybody out?
Yes, or most likely, uh, the, the intent of the, the ordinance is to, to remedy these types of things from happening and occurring. Uh, if we just merely issued the citation and walked away, that's gonna continue to happen. So to keep it from continuing and to be violation, we would shut the party down, yes.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused. Is the citation against the, the person who's broken, uh, the law here or the business?
It would be the business or the promoter of the party or whoever is responsible for allowing the alcohol to be brought in.
So could, would it be a case where we could cite the property owner and the one throwing the party?
Right, and, and the section, it's broken down under the, um, under the responsibilities of both the person who's hu- the host, the owner, as well as the guest.
So as an owner, I'm, I'm charged with, um, simply not allowing, uh, someone to rent my establishment, knowing that they were going to have BYOB after midnight.
On, on page two, paragraph three, it describes between the hours of twelve AM and six AM, it is unlawful for any owner of a business. So if it was simply a landlord situation, I don't think it would be. Uh, but what we would probably do if we saw a pattern of repeated violations where the owner keeps allowing this to occur, a nuisance action or injunctive relief would be, uh, taken.
Lobbied against the owner.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman, if you can.
Good morning to you all. As it relates to enforcement, I think you asked, already answered Councilman Congress's question, but we're trying to, with this ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, have accountability for the actions. Is that correct?
Yes, two things. One is accountability, and two, get out ahead of the violence, ahead of the problems, and prevent them as opposed to investigate who.
A proactive approach.
Right, right.
Well, let me ask you this, I'm just asking a question, I'm just putting it out there. In this accountability stage, billboard has enough because they don't have beer license or alcohol, like, to sell alcohol. Would it be proper for us to have a committee? And if they're gonna have a private party, you're just gonna seek them out? Or if they're gonna have a private party to come through that committee? Or you're just gonna seek them out on regular patrol?
We, we looked at the various tools that we have. The alcohol's regulated by the state, and they do not allow us to interfere other than certificate of, uh, moral character. The city does have a beer board, but in looking at the way this was done, this is around those two regulatory things. So this fills a gap where the beer board can't go.
Correct.
This, this is a police action.
Correct, but then again, I ask, is this just through regular patrol or through your internet, how you gonna enforce it? Or you, or should we have a committee on special events and private parties?
I, I'm not sure. Mr. Cobb may be more inclined to answer whether or not the city can regulate that type of thing on the front end.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the question I'm asking.
When we searched on what other cities had done and what the courts had said about the way they approached it, this was a method that Chattanooga, Knoxville had used and that the courts had, uh, approved. I understand what you're saying. I couldn't find any authority to where that had been done and approved. Instead of plowing new ground, I wanted to try to get in behind somebody who had been successful.
Last question, as it relates to, cause beer is alcohol, but as it relates to beer and, and or ABC alcohol, can we govern the alcohol that's brown bagged, you say BYOB in the ordinance? You regu- or you, with the beer or the liquor store? Alcohol, the brown bag, BYOB? Touch your subject.
Well, it's, it's analyzing the problem, going through three different doors, I think maybe the best way. There's one door you go through and you look at the alcoholic beverage commission, their powers, their regulation, and, and that's generally, the police can, can enforce those laws, but the permit and the withdrawal of permits done by the ABC. The beer, which is defined by, our statute is five percent or less, no matter what you call it, you have to get a permit, either a permanent license to sell beer or a special occasion permit, and then we analyze, are they following? Do they have their permit up? Are they doing proper sales, proper AIDS, ID checks, things like that, which you on the beer board are very familiar with? This addresses that third door where there's been no regulation, no oversight, no monitoring and no enforcement. And we're trying, and we see that most of the recent problems have been through that third door. And this gives us a tool that if we see it developing, or if we go and see what is going on, that we can stop it or regulate it or close it down bef- hopefully before there's a problem. And that's how I'd like to think about it.
I understand. And, and this had to be very narrowly tailored because the slippery slope is to infringe upon my business.
Right, or if you have a, a birthday party, family, a friend, it's not a commercial activity, and that's why we've had the exception for the hotels. Someone can drink between the hours of twelve and six in their room.
Right.
But the hotel could not host an event out in the public space. Uh, I think this is a good ex- it illustrates best, as I can tell, the line, the careful line we're trying to walk.
So what you're saying, Attorney, is you just wanna us to look at this ordinance very carefully instead of going above and beyond it with a, a committee set up to govern special parties and events?
What I'm saying is, this was my best efforts at drawing from the resources. I want y'all to look at it, ask questions now. I'll try to answer them, ask questions tomorrow. It has to be passed on two readings, and whatever I can do to help explain, uh, and, you know, I always welcome good ideas. This is the start, and I think it's a pretty good, because the courts have approved it.
I'm in agreement with it.
Good, I thank you.
But I just want to put a little bit more teeth in.
Mr. Cobb, just wanna make sure I understand. Unless beer is involved, this ordinance does it affect regular alcohol?
Um, it does, it's, it's, both have alcohol, but the state statutes call one beer below five percent and the other alcoholic beverages. And in the first page, paragraph one, between the hours of twelve AM and six AM, it is unlawful for any person to consume beer or an alcoholic beverage. So it, it, it is intended to refer to both. We call beer the alcohol of five percent or less and alcoholic beverage fi- uh, above five percent.
I just have one last question, Council. What other cities did we look at relative to their, what other cities did we look at relative to their statute?
Knoxville was the one that we borrowed or stole most from. Because they'd had some litigation over it, and we felt comfortable that what, when the courts looked at their latest version of the ordinance and passed on it, that we felt like that kinda gave us a safe harbor to do what they've done, what the courts had said they did, where it's okay.
And case law came out of that jurisdiction up there.
Excuse me, Mr. Cobb, in that first paragraph, I don't see alcohol beverage anywhere.
Listen, we got another version that you do.
Well.
I guess what he's saying is what I asked, if we say BYOBs is beer and alcohol and all.
Okay.
You on my glasses? It, it, either, either one of us has the wrong version.
I was looking at this first paragraph and you were referring to this.
The number, I mean, the number one.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
We might, we may wanna look at the wording in that first paragraph, so we need to add it there also in the second reading. But the question for you now is, uh, as far as regular bars, restaurants, this doesn't affect them at all, does it? Unless they rip their place out for?
Not all restaurants are licensed to sell beer.
Right.
Restaurants that are licensed to sell beer can, can have people, if they want to allow them to brown bag, uh, un- under rules, regulations. But then we have a tool to regulate that conduct and activity by a show cause hearing to revoke their, their beer license. What, what we were faced with is someone would host a private party, we would see indications that there may be problems, may be trouble. There was literally nothing we could do to intervene.
Okay.
Until there'd been a crime committee.
My, my question is, is on regular bars and regular bars primarily. Can they allow that, brown bagging after two?
If they're not concerned about profit.
Oh.
I mean, that, that.
So it is legal for them to do that after two, and this doesn't stop that?
I'll be honest with you, I, I haven't gone back and looked at the ABC rules about brown bagging. I think that, that you can, but I, I'm not sure about that. Uh, whatever they, whatever a place was licensed to do before this ordinance, they can still do, and I'd be glad to research that.
Okay. I know some of the problems are coming from regular bars, uh, and it's a brown bagging after, is it two, the two the cutoff that they can't sell?
Three.
Okay.
Three's the last sale, three fifteen tables are cleared.
Okay.
Under the, uh, under the ABC, and, and I've had this question, let me address it. If we allow sale of liquor by the drink, we lose control over when to shut down sales of beer. So it's, it's the same time for everybody, so we've lost, we lose control of that under state law. But it's a three AM last sale, last, last sale, three fifteen tables cleared.
And they could brown bag at eleven o'clock?
Twelve.
They could before twelve.
If they could brown bag before this, they can still brown bag. I'm not.
How, how, tell me again, and I, I think you went over this, but how did you decide on that particular time from twelve, uh, AM to six AM?
I asked Major Corley.
Nothing, nothing ever good happens after midnight.
Those were the times where we were having a.
Well, sometimes nothing good happens.
And, and, yeah, right, and recall what my parents had said. No, we, we, we talked to the people who were on the street who were doing the enforcement and suggestions. We wanted to be something that focused on where the problem was, the least, I think, as Councilman Brooke said, the least intrusive, uh, regulation that we could design that would have, would address the problem.
Mr. Chairman, it would give us a mechanism because we, we have had some trouble in this city and even murders in this city with private parties. But it, this is a public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, not yet, but it's gonna, we're gonna have one. Uh, let me, let me ask one question, this is, if, owner of a vacant building, the owner of a vacant building, signs a lease for a weekend party. And even, even with this ordinance being in effect after midnight, if a catastrophic event occurs, whether it be before midnight, after midnight. event occurs, whether it be before midnight, after midnight, obviously civil, civil litigation could be brought against either the party host or the owner of the building. Normally that's done by a victim or a victim's family.
Right.
Is there enough wiggle room to where that civil action could be initiated by the city for loss of image, police time, you know, whatever, what else ever involved in, in trying to wrap up a catastrophic event in, in any situation like that?
The, and we, Major Corley and I have discussed available tools. I don't think the city can sue for damages other than the damage the city itself has suffered, and those types of non-property damages are hard to justify. Now, we could do a nuisance action, and the nuisance action gives us some tools and some remedies, the cost associated with the enforcement. But if a vacant building wanted to host a party, they'd first have to get a certificate of occupancy, which is, uh, another way we have at looking at the appropriateness.
And again, our main enforcement will be someone has to report this. A citizen has to report this, has to see this and report it.
Officer has to see it, it'd be like a misdemeanor offense.
We'd have to be present to, to issue the citation.
So you...
But we would have to know about it, if that's your question, yes, we'd have to know about it. Either prior to or...
Okay.
In a lot of cases, Major, you know about the parties before they happen.
Uh, most of them, we, at least you have some short notice beforehand.
And, and this ordinance is directed at commercial activity, and commercial activity for a party usually indicates charging an admission fee, promotion, advertising, spreading the word to draw a crowd.
So we looking at accountability and responsibility?
Right.
I would think the officer would have to see someone consuming the alcohol with that. Yeah.
Right.
Are you gonna go incognito to these things? Because I can see how that would be hard, you know, unless you do something like that. But it's a good ordinance, if it can be enforced.
Mayor, the only concern I have is, um, I mean, I support them, you know, I think it's a great tool that we could use, but we still have to realize, we have a lot of people that have retirement parties, have parties, birthday parties, and I don't wanna step on people's toes like that, they're trying to have something that's gonna be nice for a family member, and, you know, that won't serve back a hall, and might still pass 12 o'clock. I mean, 'cause a lot of people have private function, I mean, as long as they're not charging, you know, for the event, uh, I think we should put a stipulation on, but still we gotta be careful, we don't wanna, you know...
And class reunions.
Yeah, I mean, to have parties like that.
Most, most class reunions I've been to have been hosted by hotels or event centers that have license. I mean, we're not gonna change the way those things are done at all. This, this is designed to hit that group that has no accountability, no responsibility, and no enforcement tools until a crime has been committed. We've seen these type of activities associated with crime enough, we're thinking we need to get in there earlier and prevent it.
Yeah, I think that's good, but I just, like I said, I just don't wanna step on people's toes or that, you know, try to do the right thing.
Even with folks that work third shift, they have their retirement, retirement parties before, in before midnight.
Yeah, most of them do, but you got a lot of people that have a party, I mean, like I said, I'm not trying to say three or four o'clock in the morning thing, but you got some that might stay a little later than 12 o'clock.
Like New Year's Eve.
Having, having a little parties that not, just to, you know, that's, you know, cover charge to get in.
Okay, I think the last I recall, we're gonna question an answer period from Counsel, not for sure we have a motion, do we, or do we not have a motion?
We have one now.
You got one now and a second.
Mr. Chairman, before we take the motion, I think we have a public hearing, are we gonna do that first?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna conduct that right this minute.
We gonna do the vote first?
Yeah, do the motion.
Motion the second, okay.
Okay, this is an ordinance on first reading, and I'll open the public hearing to see if there's anyone present who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Come on up, sir, have a seat.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Go ahead.
I'm in opposition of the law as it reads right now.
What's your name, sir?
Uh, my name's Tony Stokes.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause I've, uh, I read over it yesterday. Uh, I read over the law yesterday, and as it reads now, uh, my interpretation of it by no means am I of legal mind, but, uh, I interpreted it saying that, uh, a customer or an owner of an establishment who is having a private party with no cover charge, okay, so that would cover me under my wedding anniversary or, uh, my birthday, that I can't have my friends and family, I mean, in a place that I own past 12 o'clock. And I'm looking at the enforcement of the, the alcohol part of it, I, like I said, I'm by no means of legal mind, but it really does seem like a very slippery slope, just by the questions that the council was asking. So I just ask that we, uh, maybe look at this a little bit further, 'cause I'm all in support of anything that can help curb the violence, you know, in the city. But at the same time, uh, you know, adults that are legally drinking and responsible are held to a constraint that, uh, I feel like is maybe unfair. Prime example are a lot of the other events that are hosted in the city, at city venues that may only go to 1:00, but it's past 12:00. So are all those people subject to citations, you know, and arrest? And if somebody wants to host a party of this nature, is there a mechanism for them to legally, you know, present their idea to the city and legally brown bag or allow people to, uh, rent their venue for profit in a legal manner? You know, is there a legal mechanism to go to the city, present what you wanna do, with your hands open on the table? But like I said, just once again, just the way I read this law, it's a very slippery slope. I, I feel like that, uh, we're about to cross here.
Your first question, help me understand, was it, it's your residence or a business that you own having a party?
A business that I own. Because this also covers, uh, let's say, West Tennessee Healthcare wanted to have a, a private party for West Tennessee Healthcare employees, and all hotels don't have bars, okay? They have ballrooms, but all hotels don't have bars, so they don't have a beer or liquor license. So you're gonna tell me Kellogg's, West Tennessee Healthcare, or any factory wants to have a Christmas party, you know what I'm saying, are unable to, you know, rent a place to have their event for their employees in which they're not having a cover charge, it's merely a celebration?
That those, those companies, I can tell you from experience, get a special state license to have those parties.
Okay, uh, a state license for what?
For special events to serve alcohol.
Okay, so that would be issued by, uh, ABC? Now, my understanding of what I read in ABC laws is there are not a lot of, uh, special permits issued for alcohol. From what I read and interpreted, it's like maybe a political event or something of that nature, but I didn't read anything. I would like to see, uh, some literature that relates to special permits for ABC.
I'm not a state official, I can just, by being in those events and having...
Well, I'm just going by what, I'm going by, I'm going by the statutes that I've read under the state of Tennessee under the ABC laws.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Stokes. Uh, Mr. Cobb, as I, as I understand, most of this came from the Knoxville ordinance, and obviously it'd been tested, uh, constitutionally, and, and again, um, before I call for the, for close the public hearing, uh, this is the ordinance on first reading, and if there's any modifications, any additions that you feel like to be added to this ordinance before second reading, I would encourage you to, to call Mr. Cobb's office, talk to him about it, and we'll continue to, to work on it, but I think most definitely this is a step in the right direction because it's something that his administration, his council's fought for a number of years on unsupervised, uh, brown bagging parties, which we've had some catastrophic events occur. Uh, anyone else in the audience who'd like to be heard on this ordinance, either in support of or in opposition to? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion to second on ordinance on first reading.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Before the vote, I, I would like to say that the ordinance itself is, its intent is to curb violence and parties that are not, the way the only is not present, but also between this first reading and this second reading, let's, let's, let's fine tune this. I see some gaps in services.
And, and very quickly, just to piggyback on that, I would just suggest that there could be some unintended consequences seemingly, uh, like Mr. Stokes, I guess, illustrated, so I would kinda echo that as well.
Yeah.
Thinking this would be tweaked a bit.
We can close the whole thing down, it's 12 o'clock, but everybody's not a criminal.
They're right, but they are.
No.
I have them up, I have them up in my jail.
Yeah, but everyone is not breaking the law, so let's fine tune it between the first and second reading. Well, that's the thing.
We'll consider this ordinance, we will consider this ordinance a work in progress, it's, it's an excellent start, and, and at least we have the foundation for something that the city can, can use. We have a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, we'll finish up, uh, with the agenda, I think we had gotten through item one under new business, go to item two, report to the council on auction of city property by Henson Auction versus Gov. Deals, I think this was something the council asked for when this contract was awarded to, uh, when Herbert was awarded last year.
Right. In December of last year, city council approved this contract to Rick Henson over Gov. Deals, and you asked us to come back in a year with a report letting you know how Rick Henson did over Gov. Deals, and Captain Lampley is here with this report, and he's going to explain it to you.
Well, the, uh, the original report concerns Gov. Deals and Henson Auctions. We had a increase of two percent, or decrease of two percent in our gross profit. We tried to compare some similar items, they compared rather favorably, uh, we were making a little bit less on vehicles than, uh, with, with Mr. Henson than we were with Gov. Deals. But the problem with that is you have to compare the same kind of vehicles, the same condition vehicles, because otherwise you're, you're not being, being fair. But we tried to provide you with the details in regards to Mr. Henson and Gov. Deals, and also, uh, Mr. Henson's been very responsive to us, he's been there to pick up property when we ask him to, he's been very helpful.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll accept that, and the council will accept that prior to our next bidding offer for surplus vehicles.
Well...
When is that, now?
Well, it can be, but I thought, uh, if it's, if it's okay with you and city council, um, this is a five-year contract, it's a one-year contract with four options to renew, so I would recommend, and, uh, Captain Lampley has agreed, and we met with Rick Henson, and he has agreed to go ahead with the second year, um, and we also would have three years left. Uh, as an enticement, he's go, he's going to waive the $25 vehicle pickup fee, and he's also going to waive the 10% fee for miscellaneous items that he charges the city. For instance, if we have, um, stackable letter trays and we send them out to him to sell, he charges the city 10%. Now he's going to waive that. So that will be favorable on our part. We don't want him to lose money, and, but, but we think that this is going to be a good thing, and we, we'd like to try this for a year to see how it goes. Uh, he does charge his customers or his buyers a fee, but what would affect us would, would be the $50 flat fee per vehicle, uh, sales for fifty, for $500 or less, we, we will currently pay that, and a hundred dollar flat fee per vehicle it sells for less than $501. So we're, we're really getting the best of both worlds like this, and we would like to make that recommendation that you accept the second year of this five-year contract.
Okay, Counselman?
We're, we're one year in already, I thought we're just six months in.
This is just an update right now, but...
It's a six-month update.
Okay. But, but we could go ahead today and approve it with the new terms for another year, and then review it again a year from now?
Yes, if that's what you would like to do.
It, it would be a year, and it would still have that renewal, if we don't do anything, automatic renewal for, for the five-year period or whatever.
Yes, and if he doesn't like us, if we don't like him, we can cancel it, you know, at the end of that year. But he's been very responsive, um, the, uh, what were you saying about the administrative staff, there's less work for the administrative staff?
Yes, uh, one of the problems with Gov. Deals, it's very, uh, labor-intensive for the people in central records and MSL. Uh, Mr. Henson does take away a lot of that labor intensity that we're currently dealing, we, we dealt with with Gov. Deals.
Okay, what, okay, let's, let's clarify, if you would, and it's like your, your recommendation to council on awarding the contract for a second year option with, with some obvious modifications of that based on what you had the first year?
Yes, the first modification would be that he would waive the $25 vehicle pickup fee. He charges us $25 to go to the, the impound lot, I suppose.
Or a police department.
And take those vehicles to his auction location. He's going to waive that $25 fee. He's also going to waive the 10% miscellaneous fee on all items.
Okay, and this approval by council, if it's approved, would be completed when? In two years, after two-year, after his two-year option is over?
Yes, after the second year, and...
So maybe he's got a year and a half after this update, right?
Actually, he would just have one year, because this would take effect in March. The current contract that we brought to you was last December, and it didn't take effect until March because of the switchover with Gov. Deals and everything.
Okay, counsel, counsel understand...
One question maybe. Uh, is it legal for us to change the contract before the end of the year since it was a one-year contract?
It is, because it went out as a sealed proposal, and when you have proposals, you can make changes like that.
My only question, we don't have to rebid it?
We can rebid it if you like, this is such a sweet deal.
You recommend...
He's local, uh, he, I mean, he's just done a, a really super job, and I, I really see my reason to rebid it.
You, what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, what you're saying, let's get it while the getting's good.
You got it.
So move.
Second. Thank you, Harvey.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion from council. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you. Thank you, Cap, thank you, Ms. White. Oh, Adam three, under new business, board appointments, the, um, appointment of Charles Dawson to the Jackson Housing Authority.
Second.
Motion the second, discussion, council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Then also under the Board of Zoning Appeals, appointment of, uh, Marty Hutchinson Cooper.
So move.
Second.
Motion the second, council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
The final item is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So move.
We have a motion and a second discussion from council. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned.